Thanks. Maybe this is your microphone. I think that's your microphone.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, this public hearing. June tenth, twenty twenty-four, public hearing of the planning commission to order. The purpose of this meeting is for hearing requests for changes in zoning and special procedures. Can we take a roll call, please?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart, Mr. Cunningham, Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum. Mr. Presiding Officer, excuse me.
Thank you. Welcome to the Saint Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, Secretary of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce Mel, directly to my right here, Mel Wilson, Deputy Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you've picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the room. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list, the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission agenda. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the commission's report when it goes to the county council. The commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting on July first, twenty twenty-four. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting by June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four will be distributed to the Planning Commission in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the county council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition are with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing a group will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the commission or the county council. The purpose is to make a crowd counterpart of the record to each position. That first petition heard tonight will be PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-four, Impact Agape Ministries.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, it's PC seventeen dash twenty-four and eighteen dash twenty-four, Impact Agape Ministries. The request is for a change in zoning from R three residence district to R five residence district and a conditional use permit in the R five residence district on a tract size of seven point five three acres on the west side of Belle Fountain Road, opposite Real Avenue. And the proposed use is a group living facility for religious, educational, or charitable purposes. As you can see from the context map, the site is in red, is in North County, and then you can see the site outlined in red and the aerial on the right. From this larger aerial, you can still see the sign outlined in red. From the land use map, you can see that the petition site currently hosts a church. It is adjacent to an elementary school and a childcare center. There is a vacant facility that used to serve as a high school due west, and then there's an assisted living center even further west. And then the larger land uses are primarily single-family in nature and various R residence intensities. This photo is facing west into the site and shows the public hearing notice. This image shows the adjacent land uses to the south. This image shows south along Belle Fountain Road. This is a picture north back along Belle Fountain Road. And this is east across Belle Fountain Road. There we go. This is facing west into the site, and it shows the front of the accessory building that would host the use requested by the conditional use permit. This is west along the northern side of that same building, and you can see the primary building, which is a church behind due west from the accessory structure. This is facing north at the first of two curb cuts, and you can see there's a monument sign as well. This is facing north at that adjacent elementary school. This is facing west, once again showing the church, the northern property line and a drive aisle to the back of the property. This is facing north on the rear side of that accessory building. This is facing east, showing another rear image of that same building. And this is facing east towards the second curb cut onto Belle Fountain Road. This is facing west along the southern property line, showing the back of the property. And finally, this is facing west again at the adjacent childcare facility due west. And now for the presentation, petitioner's presentation.
Mr. Taylor, I would just note that Mr. Cunningham has joined the meeting.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here to present to you all the petition for rezoning for Impact Agape Ministries. My name is Charles Allen, and I'm here with our pastor, Pastor Kenneth Haynes, Deacon Starks, Elder Jeffrey, and Minister Crosby as part of our ministry. We do have a presentation for you for rezoning. Our mission at the ministry is to create an environment that encourages the avoidance of relapsing, inspires self-improvement through biblical principles, and which leads to a transformational life experience for residents. For every person to, the vision is for every person to live a life of sobriety and experience the highest level of continuous success through their God-given gifts and abilities. For Impact Agape Ministry, we're a nondenominational ministry with a mission to impact our communities through powerful teaching and application of God's Word. As a part of that, the vision that the pastor received, we developed, the development of Life Change is the name of the of what we're naming the sober living facility, and it was birthed and identified for the special use of the rectory building that was shown earlier. And there would no, there will also be no additional signage or anything at the facility because of the use of the facility for privacy for the, for the use of the, for the people. Life Change is a nonprofit organization established by Impact Agape Ministries in Spanish Lake, Missouri. Our primary objective is to help women who are struggling with drug and alcohol addiction by providing them with transitional sober living. We recognize that addiction is a complex issue that requires multifaceted approaches. I also have experienced myself with dealing with family members who've had those type of issues in their lives, so we can take it personally and, and we see the effect on, on the people and also with the families because it's, it doesn't just affect the person, it affects the family as well. Part of our program, we have a comprehensive twelve-step biblical-led recovery program, and the program is designed to provide residents with the tools and resources they need to achieve lasting recovery and build a brighter future for themselves and their loved ones. Our facility will be professionally staffed with, dedicated to supporting and guiding the residents throughout their recovery. The organization is committed to making a positive impact on the lives of those struggling with addiction. And we believe that by providing comprehensive support and guidance, we can help individuals overcome their challenges of addiction and achieve sustained sobriety. So we're dedicated to continue to help the women break free from the addiction and rebuild their lives, get back to their families, step, one step at a time. The people coming through the program are only coming through from court-involved and medically redeemed residents that will be accepted for our program. The residents will receive three meals per day. There will no, we will not allow any visitors to be allowed to come on the premises. Residents can stay at the home for six months to a year. Life Change, the ministry program, is a model aims to help residents become self-sufficient and thrive instead of surviving and depending on their addiction. The ranch-style house features eight to ten dormitory-style homes, rooms, each equipped with their own private bathroom, and the home can support up to fifteen women. And basically, we're back to why we're here today. That's the reason why we're here. In order to allow us to allow the facility to open up, we need to change what we currently have. The zoning is R three. We were requested to be changed to R five with a conditional use permit specifically for the use of the dormitory or group living facilities for religious, educational, and charitable purposes. We were asked to present a site development plan, which we submitted, and it shows some minor modification of the parking lot to adjust some of the handicap parking to allow the area behind the rectory to be used for regular parking and other activities we may decide to do. As was shown earlier, this is the front of the, the home that we're going to use for the facility, looking west. And this is looking northwest from the Belle Fountain, right at the driveway. This is looking south. And this is the rear looking east. And right there is more of a courtyard area where we allow people to come out and enjoy the weather on the balconies. They will not be allowed to be roaming around freely out on the front or anything of that capacity. Our final findings, where we did some market analysis, after research, we discovered in the area that sober living programs were not available in our local demographic area. Most programs were only accessible in larger cities, and the nearest sober living facility is actually twenty-five miles away in Saint Charles, Missouri. After further research on, on the zip code six-three-one-three-eight, we found that the total population is eighteen thousand, six hundred and two, with forty-six percent men and fifty-three percent women, and the median age is of thirty-two. So the average median household income is fifty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, and the poverty rate is eighteen percent. The average household size is two point five four. So therefore, the, the data supports the demographic area that we want to support with our services. Currently, no residential facilities are in Spanish Lake at all. Our community goals is to generate referrals through the legal and healthcare systems, develop a website for brand awareness, cultivate relationships with other organizations and businesses to offer more services, which we already have started to establish those with other organizations who are doing like-minded activities and participate in community events to build an engagement and brand awareness and basically allow the people to live a better lifestyle from what they were living before. As mentioned before, we'll house between ten to fifteen women in the facility within the six months to maybe a year. For women to be reunified with their families within ninety days, establish proper training and development for staff to, to ensure that we can support the residents that we're, that we're looking to have in the home and conduct evaluation to ensure the effectiveness of the program and outcomes. So that in a nutshell, we, we're striving to reach out to those women who have had challenges in their lives with the drug and alcohol abuse and who have went through the program and we're, we're working to get them reestablished in, in, in society again. So that's the end of my presentation. Were there any questions or anything that anyone would have?
Yes, sir. Are these women single? Are they married? Do they have children or?
Well, it could be a variety. We didn't specify, we don't specify if it's going to be a single or
Okay.
It depends on what they went through the program.
Which leads me to my next question. I don't want to get all into the treatment of it because
Yes.
I'm a recovering alcoholic myself. I've been, other than falling off the wagon in two thousand and four, I've been sober for forty years.
Congratulations.
But, you know, it's been a rough go. But I guess my question is, you said no contact, no visitors or nothing. Is that for the whole time someone's there? Because it's been my experience, I'm only talking from my experience.
Yes.
If it had not been for my wife beside me and my Savior, I wouldn't be, I'd probably be dead by now.
Well, I understand. Yeah.
So I, you know, I'm just wondering if someone's got a child to be sequestered away from that child. I understand at first, when, when somebody's really up against it, that, you know, keeping them away from everybody for a short time or
Right.
but, but to do that for extended periods, I don't know.
Well, the idea is, and I'm sure the pastor can alleviate to that too, is to first bring them in and, and work with them to get their lives, get them on a path, because we are going to have a program already set and placed for them to follow. And as they go through that, they will be transitioning towards spending time with their family and things that they should do. That's the ultimate goal in the first place, to get back with their family because they might have been separated because of the path they took with the drugs and the alcohol. I understand what you're saying. My, my biological father was an alcoholic too. And I saw him do some things, my mother, my stepmom, and things of that nature when he was under the influence. And then my, my ex-wife, I found out after we got married, she was hiding it from me and, and things changed. That's why we wound up getting divorced, and it was her request, but she's made a hundred percent change as well to where she actually works in facilities now to help others do what she needs to do. And it was the same thing. She needed, she needed the extra help somewhere else and, and through God and other people supporting her, that was what happened.
Thank you.
Pastor, would you like to come on?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So the rectory building that you're planning to reuse, and you said that the outside area would be limited to the balcony and that courtyard, it seems small. Like if I was, you know, there, it would seem like, wow, that's a very small outside area to be allowed to go to.
That's, that can be perceived that way. You're correct. But we did visit a few other facilities in different states, actually last year that I actually already have them in place. And some of those didn't have that much space, but the whole idea was to get the people in to allow them to, to get more, what's the word? Back on their feet and not to feel as though they're being controlled, to step out into communities and, and live a better life to make the right decisions that they need to make. So, but this is the first step, but you know, Pastor, you want to add something to that?
I could take your speaker card.
She needs to call it.
I need to call it.
Thank you, Charles. First of all, thank you for allowing us to speak to you. The concern for Mr. Elliott.
Could you tell us your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Pastor Kenneth Haynes. I just go by Coach. That's better for me. But concerning the things you're talking about, we understand that people need to make contact with the family because it's in the early stages. We're kind of feeling our way through, but that's the first commitment we want people to make, to stay focused, because our real goal is to get them out within thirty to sixty days to help them get back to society as a productive citizen. And it takes time because I've experienced people, as a matter of fact, I was a foster parent, my wife and I, for Saint Louis County, Saint Louis City. So we saw the effect it had on the children, and we spent a lot of time trying to teach the children that we're not here to be their parent. Your parents are going through something, so we're just helping you through this process until they can get back on their feet. We also got this information from American organization, Urban League, the Urban League. They were sharing with us how serious it is with the drug-related issue. I always thought that was a problem. And for the most part, most people that have gone through any type of drug rehab, rehabilitation, I found out that a lot of times, and there's nothing wrong with it, they come out of society and they're just put back out there. And most of the time what ended up happening, they're, they're back out there and they go back to what they know. Sometimes they don't have support, a support, a support system. So we went with the ladies because that's who we were in contact with most of the time when we're dealing with the children. So we're not trying to keep the ladies from their family, loved ones. We're trying to keep them focused. The focus is to get them in there, get them ready, prepare to come back into society as a productive citizen.
Good question. Good evening, Coach.
Good evening, sir.
What's the maximum duration of a stay? Ninety days?
Our goal is, is between ninety days to six months. It depends on the different individuals, because different individuals have health issues. Some of them are trying to get jobs, some of them are being trained. So we provide those resources as well, where some of them will be going to work, and we have, we're planning to have vans to get them back and forth to work, to school, training, whatever they need. And so our focus, again, we have a biblical principle that we use, twelve, twelve-step program. They have to, not, we're not forcing anybody to do this because it's not just natural, it's spiritual. So we're trying to reach out to them from the spiritual, from their heart, to minister to them. So they're required to come to our Bible studies. They're required to come on Sunday mornings to our services. They're not to be, we're not trying to make members out of them. We're trying to support them and give them some encouragement and teach them the way they need to go. And a lot of times it's, it's dealing with spiritual, it's a spiritual fight, whether people believe it or not, that's what it really is. And so we try to deal with them from a natural standpoint as well as spiritual standpoint.
So, so six months? Folks might be there six months then?
Some may be there six months, some may be there a year. It just depends. But our goal, our goal is to get them through the system and get them back in the situation where they're a productive, where they're doing something productive, where they're working, they're going to school, getting some kind of formal education if need be so. Our goal is to focus on keeping them focused and to get them back with their families. That's the main thing. Because I saw what happened when the people were hurt. Those children were hurt, and they wanted their parents back. We were there to serve and help. They wanted their parents.
Just so there's no maximum duration, they could be there a year, two years, it just depends on the situation?
No, actually, they have to be, the longest they can be there is a year.
The longest they can be there is a year.
That's the longest. You know, we can't keep them there. You know, we don't want to do that. Our goal again is focusing, that's the reason why we said, our main focus is to get them focused on getting back to society and getting them in a position where they get their children back with their family, their husband, wife, I mean, their husbands, you know, if that's, you know, if they're, they're married or whatever, to get them back in that direction.
And just real quick, you might have had this in your presentation. How are you funded exactly? Like, how's the funding?
Well, right now, we, we propose a, for a, we have a grant that we're proposing for right now.
Okay.
And our goal still is to do it, even if, no matter what the outcome is, to be able to provide the services to the people.
I've seen there ten to fifteen residents there at a time, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you said a bathroom per resident, so you're going to put, well, thirteen more bathrooms in?
No, there's, there, there, there are six, seven there. I think it's six or seven that's there, but they're, they're, they're between the bedrooms.
Got you.
And they're all ladies, so they have access to those bathrooms. Now, we do have, we will have security there, cameras in the hallways, cameras in the conference room, the kitchens, not in the restrooms on the bedroom. And we have twenty-four-hour services, security, police officers.
So you don't plan on making any real changes to the existing
No.
structure building?
No.
The rooms are ready to go?
The walls are ready to go. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you offer any follow-up treatment once a person's been through this?
Follow-up? Yes, we, we're doing follow-up. We don't offer any treatment. We actually get those people from different hospitals or different organizations where they've already been released, saying they've already gone through a program, they qualify to be released to come to us. So they're not people that's coming off the street. They're coming from organizations that's already been into some sobriety checkpoint.
It's been my experience, it's a lifelong obligation to stay safe.
It is.
You're never cured of alcoholism.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Um, how many staff do you anticipate?
We have around the clock, it'll be eight people there. Eight.
Thank you.
So twenty-four hours, eight people from the staff will be there.
It'll be eight people at one time?
Yes.
Wow.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Lou.
Um, do you, do you also still operate a daycare?
I think he asked if you'd operate a daycare out of the facility. Is that right, Mr. Cunningham?
That's correct, on the property.
No.
Okay. And just to follow up to sort of what Mr. Elliott was asking first, if the women had dependents, their dependents could not reside there with them, it would just be
Exactly.
the individual. Okay.
Could they visit?
Right now, we, we, from my personal experience and from someone that's already been in the profession for years, that's given us direction on what we need to do. Their goal again is to make sure we can get them through thirty, thirty to ninety days. That's the real goal. But it depends on, some may be going, going to school, they may not be ready to have a place where they can rent housing and things of that nature. So we have to give them time. Some may have jobs, some may be on the job when they come. So those individuals may be ready to be released back into society. So those individuals may be ready to be released back into society because they're already working, they have a job. We're taking them to that job, picking them up and bringing them back. And then what happens in a case like that, once they've gone through our requirements and they've completed them, the next point is, is to prepare them to leave. And that, again, the goal is thirty to ninety days. So we can't say that's gonna happen to all of them.
What, excuse me, what's the other building used for? Is that your church?
That's the church. Yeah. And to Mr. Elliott's concern, and as well as yours, Ms. Hancock, I think it was, uh, as far as, um, the, the back of the bill, it looks a lot, it's a lot larger than it looks or appears to be on the screen. Uh, we, we don't, our goal is not to have our, our resident ladies hanging out in the front. We don't want that because we're on the main stretch and it's okay to be there, but we have seven and a half acres. There, there are other places they can go, but we like to, let's see it this way, not control them, but make sure they're focused. You know, that's the main thing to keep them focused on, on leaving.
Keep an eye on them.
Exactly, exactly. And we don't want, we don't want the, the, the community on the neighborhood to be threatened or maybe thinking something. And that's why we're not, we're not gonna have signs out there because this is private. We're protecting the interests of the individuals that are, that are there. You know, we're not trying to export anybody, put anybody on the front street.
Any questions? Okay. Questions are, are you, are you coming up to speak in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, are you speaking in favor for a group?
Make sure you tell them.
My name is Minister Sylvia Crosby. I keep hearing the question that, uh, it sounds like, it seems like we're gonna confine them. We're not confining them. They're gonna be at will to leave, but when they come back, we will have a safety check. So we'll have someone doing a safety check, make sure no drugs come back in, they're not intoxicated or under the influence. So they're free to leave, they, so that, which means they can go visit their families if they like to. So that, cause that would seem like that was the concern at once. So I just wanted to clear that part up.
Thank you. Um, are there any other individuals that like to speak in favor of this petition? Any other individuals? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition? For a group? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Okay. If not, uh, we should have a show of hands, uh, for all in favor?
Oh. Okay.
Hold, hold them up for a second. Twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any of those in opposition? Alrighty.
Okay.
We will have a show of hands and with that, we're gonna conclude this hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
And now we'll have, uh, PC nineteen dash twenty-four, Stephanie Smith Adams.
Good evening, PC nineteen dash twenty-four, Stephanie Smith Adams is in a request for an amendment development in the C eight planned commercial district for the proposed use of an adult daycare center, emergency respite center, child daycare center and all C two shopping district permitted uses on a tract of zero point eight four acres located on the northeast quadrant of Trampi Avenue and Belle Fountain Road. As the commission can see from your left, this site is located in North Mid County and on your right is the site outlined in red. This is the land use map. As you can see, this site is surrounded primarily by single family, um, to the east. And then as you go north up Belle Fountain, on that western side is more commercial. This is just a larger aerial, again, that site outlined in red. This is looking east at the public hearing sign. This is looking east at the building and the existing monument sign. This is looking west across Belle Fountain. This is looking north. This is looking northeast at the residential house next door. This is looking south through the site. This is looking at the back of the building, looking west. This is looking east on that other side is a residential parcel. This is looking south across Trampi Avenue. And this is looking west towards the intersection of Trampi Avenue and Belle Fountain. And next we'll have the petitioner.
I would just note that I think the context map was a little off. This site is really close to the first one in the Spanish Lake area as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are you both going to speak?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Smith Adams. So the site development plan for Isabella Enterprise LLC is twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one three eight. Currently, twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road was used as a dental office. There are two commercial parcels located on the property. Twelve thousand Belle Fountain is the west wing, which is approximately two thousand eight oh eight square footage. Twelve thousand, uh, zero one eight. Belle Fountain is the east wing and is approximately fifteen hundred square footage. Isabella Enterprise LLC would like to change the current zoning at twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road from C eight commercial district with the use being dental office only to a C eight commercial district with the use being an emergency respite care for foster care children, an adult daycare or in a therapeutic childcare center. I'm gonna go back because it looked like it was out of order. The emergency respite care facility, the use of twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road, um, being able to operate as an emergency respite center for foster care children located on the North County area will benefit current and new foster parents who are overwhelmed and need a break. Children Division of Family Service and other foster care agencies will benefit from this facility as well if they aren't able to place the children immediately with a family member or find placement in a foster home. Unfortunately, in this day and time, foster parents and respite care is a big need for the Missouri area. Apparently Missouri has over thirteen thousand children in foster care. The adult daycare center, if the use, uh, the use of twelve thousand Belle Fountain Road being able to operate as an adult daycare center will benefit the working families who have family members who live with them, but they are unable to stay at home alone without supervision. A therapeutic daycare center. The purpose of the property being used for a therapeutic daycare center will benefit the working families who have children that are facing developmental delays, attention and focus issues, or a specific diagnosis like autism spectrum disorder. The traditional daycare setting may not adequately meet their needs. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions from there?
So the total square footage is being divided into three separate areas for three separate purposes?
Well, it won't be three separate purposes at one time. It's, those are just the things that we would like to do, be able to use for that building. In the, um, you know, so it might be a therapeutic center on one side, an adult daycare center on the other side. But we just wanna have it.
Basically you've asked for the wider range.
Right.
Then they could facilitate any of those.
To make your decisions, you'll know what you're optioning.
Exactly. Exactly.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Michael Adams, and, uh, we've had our architect and everything come in and kind of lay out how we can set it up. If we're going to do, um, you know, pretty much what we wanted to do with it, was making the rooms and all that different things.
Because everything's developed. The building exists, the parking exists.
Yes.
Thank you.
And actually she said the, the back is at the, that's the front, front of the building that faces in.
You enter?
Yeah.
You don't enter from the Belle Fountain side, you enter from the parking lot? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so do you foresee people, residents staying the night there or is this working hours, six to six? Wha- what's the plan there?
If it will be a respite center, then it will be children there overnight.
But the, the adult daycare, no?
Well, no, the adult, no. It's just like a six to six or nine to five. It'd be a normal hours for adults.
The adult daycare will, will people be dropping them off or will you be picking them up?
Both. We'll have that available if they need transportation.
Good evening.
Hello.
What, what do you envision as far as capacity? If it's, um, uh, teenage, if it's a daycare, what do you envision? If it's a?
The capacity for the daycare, it would just, cause it's depend on the licensing because of course they would have to come out. And, um, it's so much square footage per kid, so, um, we did have someone, so, I mean, but they can't really guarantee what the amount would be, but they did give me a number of about sixty.
Six, sixty?
That's for therapeutic, that's for daycare.
That's for daycare, sixty, uh?
Children.
Sixty children. Do you have any other estimates as far as, uh, if it's the overnight?
No, if it's for, um, the respite center, just because the rooms will have to be made, you know, that's when we have to get an architect in there and everything. But, um, we wouldn't know, but our, we wouldn't wanna have like fifty kids over any, you know, staying overnight or anything like that because we still have to have the staff and everything, you know, to, uh, meet the ratio.
And, uh, everything is also handicap accessible. It was already like that from the dentist's office. So we have a handicap accessible restrooms and different things. It might be a few other things that we might've changed. So we'll be able to be there for everybody and not just certain people, you know, if they did have a handicap or something.
And if these, is there a basement?
It's a basement, but we.
In both buildings?
No. Over on the new side.
On the?
You got the one, the building that was there and then you have the new section where it has that big front piece on the front. Yeah, it's a basement in there, but we're not planning on using the basement.
It's not a walkout.
It's not walk.
It's not.
Any other questions? One more question. Wh- when would you envision making a decision of which way you're going? Whether it's the, the adult daycare or is it be a combination? How long will this building, I guess, sit vacant? Until you kind of decide, you know, which way you're going?
We're ready, but we just wanted some, throw some things out there, you know, maybe, you know, if we can't get this, maybe we'll get that, you know what I mean? So that's, that's the kind of, so basically, once we get the go ahead from you guys, then we will start developing. You know, when we go through a zoning, out of blue, pitch written up and everything that they got, everything that they would, wants to do, we would do it.
You, you don't foresee this sitting there for a year before you're?
It's been sitting now.
Yeah, uh, I can give some background for some of the newer planning commissioners. Uh, probably about a year and a half ago, Ms. Smith Adams came to public hearing to request generally a similar use. Um, but the planning commission did recommend denial. Uh, when that happens, the county council can accept that recommendation or they can reverse the recommendation, but ultimately, uh, the council didn't take an action. And so the petition was ultimately deemed denied, which then requires the petitioner to wait a calendar year before they come back.
While we waited.
And it's such a beautiful building. I'd say for you sitting there and, 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 you know, with all the foot traffic, the presence of the streets, just a lot going on over there. And if you're not that, too much, I got cameras, I had cameras put in the first, you know, first thing we did was put those in all the way around. So it's still, you know, you just wanna be able, I'm the one to go over there and keep it up, cut the grass, do all that. Cause we don't have anybody occupying it now, so why, uh, spend the money so much?
Cause right now the only permitted use is a dental office.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou or, or Vetta, do you have questions?
I do. Um, this is Erveta Williams, one of the commissioners on, on virtual. Um, sixty people sounds like a lot for that building. Can we go back to a slide that shows some of the elevation views of the building? Okay, um, yeah, so, yeah, go back to the elevation view. So it's two different sites, right? But is, is the new and the old connected together?
Well, no, cause you can only get in, uh, get into each side by different, uh, exits and entrances. The older, older building, they was pretty much using it for, um,
Storage.
Storage papers, paperwork, documents. But, uh, what we were gonna do, it was already like two doors there. And, uh, it's gonna open that door back up and that would be that answer, entrance and exit for that one. And there's several exits for the new building, like about three exits there.
So what was the previous use of the, of the new building?
I'm sorry.
I think it was all only, it's only been a dental office with part of it used for sort of.
Dental office.
Yeah, the paperwork store.
It's pretty big inside.
It's a nice sized building. And then with me going in and opening it up, having the guy come in and, well, the, uh, architect come in and set it up. He was gonna do everything, uh, pretty much how, how, uh, it would satisfy you guys and us as well.
So, uh, Ms. Stephanie Smith Adams, are you the building owner?
Yes.
Okay. And would you be the, uh, person or your business operating the programming in the building?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, you would be getting your various state licenses and inspections and all, all these applications and things that are required?
Yes.
Okay. But it sounds like you're still undecided what it's going to be. Either it's gonna be emergency respite care or, or an adult daycare. It's gonna be one of the two. Is that correct?
Yes. The thing is, we're not undecided on it. We know what we want. We just wanna make sure that when we come in front of the board that it's, um, we get whichever way, like if we decide to open this up as a respite center and do it for maybe ten years and then eventually wanna do something different, we don't have to go through the whole steps again with, um, zoning.
Pretty much, you're open to what, you know, what the possibilities could be, you know? Uh, we pretty much, well, we really wanted to do respite because that's a, I think that's a real, you know, real good need out here. And then I was hearing, cause we also own some, uh, other daycares in the area. And, uh, we have a lot of foster parents that come. And, uh, you know, you get, uh, caseworkers calling and the kids are sleeping in the office with the caseworkers. They don't have any place to send them, you know? And, um, that's why we really was trying to do something like that on this area, you know what I mean?
Yes. Uh, and this is just, uh, I'm just curious, do you guys know, uh, the previous petitioner impact of Gabe Ministries? They're just up the street from you.
No.
Okay, I was just curious. They're literally just up the road from you. Okay.
We've seen the building passing, but you know.
Oh, you have.
We're over there making sure that it's staying safe and everything and keeping it clean over there.
Yes, it's right next door to Twelman Elementary School. You've passed it many times, probably, and didn't know. Okay, that's it.
Lou, did you have a question?
No, I do not have a question. I do remember. I do remember petition coming, uh, a few years, few years back. And I, I think one of the concerns was, um, it being a daycare. And we have, uh, quite a few daycares in that particular area. Uh, but however, it sounds like they're not looking for a regular child daycare. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a therapy.
Okay. You have to deal, you know, they come to our other daycare, and you can tell that, you know, different things, uh, is going on with them. So, it's having something there for them, special for them.
Thank you. At this time, uh, we have any other questions? This time, do we have any, uh, individuals that'd like to speak in favor for a group? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in, uh, opposition for a group? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in opposition? If not, can we have a hand count of those in favor? Eighteen.
Yeah. Seventeen, eighteen?
Okay.
Eighteen.
Eighteen in favor, and any in opposition?
One. Or is it two?
Two.
Thank you.
In opposition. Thank you, and this, uh, petition is closed.
Thank you.
And now we'll have, uh, petition twenty dash twenty-four, Dharmish Sharma.
Good evening, PC twenty dash twenty-four, Dharmish Sharma, is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District and Floodplain C2 Shopping District for a proposed use of a packaged liquor store, freestanding ATM, and veterinary clinic on a tract size of six point five eight acres located on the east side of Telegraph Road, approximately three hundred fifty feet north of West Pottle Avenue. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County, and on your right is the aerial with the site outlined in red. This is the land use map. Um, this site is part of a retail plaza, and surrounding it is single-family houses behind Telegraph, with Telegraph being a very big commercial quarter with several different commercial uses. This is just a larger aerial of the site. This is looking south onto the public hearing sign. This is looking south onto the building that they want to occupy. This is looking southeast at neighboring, uh, centers. This is looking west towards Telegraph Road, where you can see the existing freestanding ATM machine. This is looking north at the Dunkin' Donuts, and also additional, um, storefronts in the plaza. This is looking northeast at the Andres Banquet Center. This is looking south through the site along Telegraph. This is looking southwest at the existing Dairy Queen sign for the site. This is looking west across Telegraph Road. This is looking north along Telegraph Road. This is looking south along Telegraph Road. And next we'll have the petitioner.
While the petitioner's coming up, I just wanted to note for the planning commission that, um, the reason that the notice is advertised to include the ATM and the vet clinic as well is because there can only be one conditionally used permit on a site. Um, so if this permit were issued, it would, uh, need to cover all of those previously approved uses. So I just wanted to mention that that's why the proposed uses are sort of random and broad.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So we have existing, uh...
Dharma Shama, state your name, please.
Uh, my name is Dharmish Sharma, and I'm the, going to be the owner of there. So, I just would like to explain. So we have a brand called A1 Wine and Spirit. So we have existing location on the same strip center. As you see, it's only hundred and forty feet from point A to B. We would like to move. So we have existing location there. We are just, uh, it has a bigger space, so we are planning to move at exist, uh, used to be DQ. That's where we are planning to move. So this is our existing, uh, location right now in operation. So, as existing location, we have limited space. It's about like, uh, fifteen to about sixteen hundred square feet. It has a narrow aisle. So we have a limited stock and everything, and it's very hard to walk with the cart as well. As you see in the picture, it's very narrow aisles each other. This is the cooler side, we have limited, uh, walking cooler, so we cannot offer more varieties of the different, uh, 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 products. This is, we have to use like, uh, freestanding, uh, coolers, because we don't have a space, so we have, uh, lots of electricity used and everything. This is our ATM. We have like tiny space, so we have to store everything very, very tight. And, uh, this is our back storage. It's like we have to store everything on the back of the building. So we have to walk in the winter or summer, so it's, it's outside. So this is our backside, and you as you see the door in the picture, that's where we have to walk every day to get our products, to put it on the shelf. And this is our mission, uh, not as big as this one, but this has a bigger space, so if we can move down there, we can make it look better, give a really good experience to customer, and make it much better. We can offer different varieties of the wine and spirits. We can have a different classes for the wine and spirits. If you have a bigger space, this is what we can make it. Not as big as this one, but similar to this concept. Thank you so much for everyone.
Questions? Uh, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How many A1 operations do you run in St. Louis? How many, how many locations do you have?
Currently, we have about, uh, with the A1 Wine and Spirit brand, we have about nine location across St. Louis.
What about the build out of this new location? It's, it used to be a Dairy Queen?
Yes, it used to be Dairy Queen.
So it needs a, a substantial re- rehab inside?
Yes, definitely, we need lots of work inside. But it's had a much bigger space than what we have it right now. So we are just moving one hundred and forty feet away from there.
Have you talked to the landlord at all about that?
Yes, landlord is ready. We are just waiting for council member to approve it. They are, they are willing to work with us. They are here to...
Got it, got it. How many square feet do you have?
Existing.
For the shopping area itself?
Right now, we have about sixteen hundred.
In the Dairy Queen.
Dairy Queen approximately thirty-two hundred to thirty-six hundred, I believe. So basically, double the size of it.
Same hours, I guess?
Yes, everything is going to be same. Everything is the same, just, uh, moving to the better location.
So your other locations you have, that you have, uh, wine sampling and...
Uh, we not able to offer it right now, because we have limited space right now. So we cannot offer that right now. But yes, we have a license to operate that.
Anybody else? Barry?
Thank you, sir.
This time, do we have any folks out? Any room that would like to s- speak in favor for a group?
Sir, did you happen to fill out a speaker card?
I do not.
Okay. I'll take your name down.
Okay, my name is, sorry, my name is Jack Swanson. I'm the owner of the shopping center on Telegraph Road that is in question there. Used to be called the Dairy Queen Center, and it was, uh, run by the same woman for over fifty years. And she finally got tired. And so they, uh, they have closed down, and, um, we have a, an excellent tenant that would like the additional space. As he explained, I don't have to go through all that for you, but he's, uh, we have him in one of our other shopping centers as well. He's a good tenant, he runs a good, clean business. And, uh, I patronize him myself, but I, I would like to, um, have this happen. Uh, I, it's just a matter of, he took this, he bought the store that had a small liquor store in it, and, and, um, bought it from the prior owner. And it's, he's doing too much more, you know, too much business for the space. So he wants to, and he wants to do more. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other individuals who would like to speak in favor? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak for a group opposition? Are there any individuals who'd like to speak in opposition? If not, can we have a hand count of people in favor of this petition? Well, thirteen. You got thirteen?
Yes, thirteen.
Are there any, uh, in opposition or concern? Count be thirteen to zero, and this hearing is closed. Our next public, petitioner is twenty-one dash twenty-four, TriStar Real Estate Acquisition LLC.
Good evening, commissioners. PC twenty-one dash twenty-four, TriStar Real Estate Acquisition LLC, is a request for a change in zoning from the C8 Plan Commercial District to the Mixed Use Development District, and an amended development in the Mixed Use Development District for multiple family residences, telecommunication tour, and all C3 permitted uses on the twenty point three five acre tract located in the east side of Timber Run Drive, west side of Whispering Pines Drive, and the north side of Olive Boulevard. The site is in the mid-county as shown in the context map, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is a larger area photograph that shows the shape of the site and the, and how the site is situated among surrounding land uses. This is a larger, this is the land use map. The site is surrounded by commercial and residential developments. To the south of the site is the city of Creve Coq. The site was most recently used as the youth bridge community foundation's heaven house, which is a hospitality house for patients and their families who travel to the region for medical care. On the same parcel, north of the heaven house is the Good Shepherd School, which provides childcare, preschool, and, and therapy for children. This is facing north to the public hearing notice. This is facing northwest at the intersection of Olive Boulevard and Timber Run Drive. This is facing southeast along Olive Boulevard. This is facing northeast along Timber Run Drive. This is facing northeast showing the existing transformer on the site. This is east from Timber Run Drive, showing the drive aisle to the heaven house. This is northeast showing the heaven house. This is southwest across, southwest towards Olive Boulevard through the subject site. This is northeast showing existing buildings on the site. This is northeast also showing telecommunication tour on the site. This is west, this is facing west towards Timber Run Drive, showing adjacent developments. This is northeast along Cram Road, showing the eastern limit of the, of the site and also adjacent development. This is to the north showing the existing parking. This is to the northeast through the site. This is north through the site. This is also north through the site. North showing the Good Shepherd School on the site. This is northeast showing the existing basin. This is facing east through the site. And this is also facing east showing the northern limits of the property of the site. Now, hold on, position.
To the door. Very good, thank you. Good evening. I'm Josh Barkus with Stock and Associates, um, here on behalf of Trifall, TriStar Real Estate, with, uh, Matt Siegel is also in attendance. So we were going through this process last year about this time, um, starting to change the zoning to the MXD district for the eighteen acres that is shown here. So that's the, the area that is now zoned, the MXD. Since then, this parking lot has become available with another two point two seven six acres. And so our amendment is to rezone that into the same MXD district, and then to include the ability to reconfigure the, uh, multifamily building that had been shown, and add two additional commercial outlots to the Olive side of the project. So the existing site, as it had before, the, the Good Shepherd School would stay. Everything generally drains from the middle of the existing building that's up along Olive Road to the south and to the north. And then the existing parking lot actually drains through a series of storm sewers that goes back behind the existing movie theater. So here's a, a plan of the new, uh, proposed development. The two commercial outlots would remain the same out front with the right in, right out off of Olive Boulevard with an extension of the median. The full access drive out onto Timber Run would remain, and we will carry that drive further into the north to create the other two commercial outlots that have the potential for either, uh, medical office building or a financial institution. That allows the multifamily building to be rotated to cross over into the added parcel, and also give us another full access drive out onto, um, the road to the east here off Whispering Pines that takes you up to, to Olive Boulevard. There's just some sections through the site. Um, generally, section A and B remain the same, except for the reconfigure of the building. And then site C is kind of showing through the parking lot and how that would look relative to the adjacent parcels. Here's a colored landscape plan showing the potential of, of the amount of canopy trees, undersoared trees, evergreens, and then shrubs planted through the site. Um, the park that's shown on the north side, which is approximately five acres, has remained unchanged with this plan as well. There we go. And then here's a couple elevation views. The materials of the building have remained the same, which I can't read from there, but... So this would be for the multifamily. So it's masonry, party board, concrete panels, and then architectural shingles. So that's looking from Whispering Pines, kind of, uh, looking westerly. And then this is looking as if you were coming in off Olive Boulevard, driving up to the front of the building. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Misses, questions?
Yep, good evening.
Good evening.
What's your anticipated timeline if everything goes according to plan as far as shovel in the ground? Can you, uh...
Could you come, yeah, to the podium, thank you? I could take your speaker card. Oh.
My address on there.
Thanks.
State your name.
Matt Siegel, TriStar Real Estate. I would say probably a demolition of the existing building, probably in the fourth quarter. Still have to, Mel's and other staff members are aware, we're working through cell tower issues, different things. So there's a lot of moving parts, very complicated deal. And then you've had the current economic environment that we're in. So there's a lot of reasons that we've had delays. But I can tell you the, the commercial aspect upfront, the outlots, a lot of demand for those.
I bet.
It's, uh, that, that's the easy part of the equation.
I mean, give me a, a approximate approximation as far as when you see this...
So the demolition, let's say it starts in the fourth quarter. Or about, that's a 60 to 90 day process by the time we move asbestos and get it all down. And then typically, a site like this is going to have six to, six months plus or minus of earth moving and horizontal infrastructure. You go vertical in the, somewhere in the seven to nine month window. And then the multifamily is usually, we like to say, about a 14 month from beginning to end for the build out. So it's a, it's a pretty big endeavor. 2026 delivery. Outlots could be delivered quicker because you, once you get the pads ready, those would be their built-to-suits depending upon the user. So those can run independently and be up quicker than the multifamily itself. The park in the rear would be part of the initial horizontal improvements. So we would have, try to have that up for the neighborhood and use, you know, depending upon weather, but for the, as quick as we can for, you know, this time, you know, next year, something like that, if it allows.
Great, thanks. Last question. Last year when you were here, you talked a lot about the outreach to the neighborhood behind the development. I imagine that outreach has continued and no...
Yeah, so I, I put this plan in front of their HOA president, March, actually looked at the date before, I mean, March 8th of this year. Put it in front of him. Also worked with, put it in front of our county councilwoman and continued the outreach. And then I talked with the board, the HOA president, just today's Monday. So I talked with him on Thursday or Friday of last week as the public notice was up there and just said, hey, any questions, anything? You know, he, he manages their social media pages, which that's their main outreach for their subdivision. He said, you know, materially, it's a similar project. You know, he, they like that we actually picked up the access off Whispering Pines to kind of disperse things a little bit. Because now the multifamily, I don't want to say the primary access, but you know, depending upon what direction you're coming from, you're definitely Whispering Pines comes into play and should be beneficial. So I haven't received any negative and feedback from them, the residents.
And Walgreens, who hot, no issues there?
No, just national brands, you know, that's really not going to hear from them. But we don't, all the cross-access easements are all recorded and allowed, so...
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Who, are there any questions? Thank you. Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor for a group? Are there any individuals who would like to speak in favor? Are there any individuals who would like to speak in opposition or concern for a group? Are there any individuals who would like to speak in opposition or concern? All right. Do you have to come up, come on up here, please? Ma'am?
Sorry.
That's okay, I can just take your name down.
Um, I'm curious about the...
Sorry, would you state your name?
Elaine Wright.
Thank you.
And I live in Timber Run. I'm curious what the impact is on the, on the traffic in Timber Run.
Elaine, you said you live in Timber Run, is that the neighborhood right behind?
Yes.
So I know that they did do a traffic study, Josh, I don't know if you'd be able to speak on that generally?
Yes, we received a concurrence letter from the TIS from MoDOT last week, and I believe I saw earlier today one from St. Louis County as well.
What does that mean?
That the traffic numbers were acceptable to, to both agencies relative to how the...
Basically, they do a study to see what the impact of the additional residents, the additional traffic to the commercial outlots would be. And what the study says is that it would not decrease the level of service. Is that correct?
Correct, with the improvements that are shown with the turn movements and then the right-in, right-out access only off of Olive Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor? Two, three, seven, seven.
I see seven.
Those in opposition or concerned?
One.
One. This time, this hearing is closed, thank you. Now we have petitioner PC 22-23, and 22 and 23-24 Kittle Property Group, Inc.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is PC 22 and 23-24 Kittle Property Group, Inc. A request for change in zoning from R5 to R6 Residence District and a PEU in R6 to allow for multifamily residences and associated amenities. This is a 12.31 acre tract on the southeastern quadrant of North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. The site is in mid-north county and is bounded in red on the aerial. On this larger aerial, Commissioners can see surrounding land uses with single-family homes to the west and south, the North Hanley Metro Station to the north, and Umsul in the east. The land use map also shows the multiple jurisdictional boundaries in the area. And Commissioners will note directly to the north of the site is the area which was subject to PC 16-24 University Crossing, which Commissioners heard last month. This is looking east into the site and facing the public hearing sign. This is south along North Hanley Road. This is across the street on North Hanley Road, there are single-family residences. And this is looking north up North Hanley Road. This is looking down North Hanley Road from closer to the intersection. There are multiple curb cuts along this road. This is looking into the site at a vacant parcel. This is the condition of the intersection of North Hanley and University Place Drive. This is that same intersection from the other side where the curb ends. This is looking east across University Place Drive. This is looking west, again, there are many curb cuts seen. This is north across University Place Drive, this is the North Hanley Metro Link Station. This is the condition along University Place Drive. Note the steep slopes between the site, which is on the right, and the street. This is a second view of the same street. You can see the North Hanley Metro Link parking structure. Two of the parcels within the petitioned area are vacant parcels which have frontage on the cul-de-sac of Marlin Drive. And this final set of images is from the frontage on Link Avenue. This is looking east. This is across Link Avenue, looking at more single-family homes. Looking west along Link Avenue where it connects to North Hanley. And finally, this is the area at the intersection of North Hanley and Link Avenue. There are similar existing structures along both North Hanley Road and University Place Drive. And now we will hear from the petitioner.
And I could take, thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Hadad, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm short.
You can pull it down towards you, yeah.
Okay, I'm Brenda Hadad with Kittle Property Group. I'm the Development Director of Multifamily Developments. Just to tell you a little bit about Kittle Property Group, we are a top developer across the country in 18 states. We have 20,000 units that boast a 92% occupancy rate. And we are looking to build at University Drive and North Hanley Road because we're looking to build some workforce type development. This is a perfect place for this. As you know, right across the highway, there's a great industrial park that's really booming. We've got Umsul just down the road and then Express Scripps. There's a lot of new businesses coming to the area, and that is who we would hope to attract to this development. While we've been working on this, I've met with Councilwoman Daze and Umsul and have received strong support from them. All right. So this is our site map. As you noticed, there's a large detention area. This site is essentially like a bowl. In the middle, it's very, very steep, and so that would be the detention area. And North Hanley is going, of course, north and south, and then that's the Metro Link across University Drive. We've tried to line up the entrance and exit to match the entrance to the Metro Link. And then our main entrance would be on North Hanley Road. This development would have 192 units. It would have amenities like a clubhouse that would boast exercise room, business center, game room, entertainment area. It would have a pool. There would be a playground and pet park in the exterior. And then this would also have very tight security. We have a top-notch security system in our company that we use. It's real-time. There would be license plate readers as people enter and exit. We're hoping to make this a gated community, although we're still talking about that with the zoning staff. And then there's cameras placed throughout that would also capture any traffic on University and North Hanley. And this is what some of the existing structures look like. There's quite a few boarded-up houses on this property. I understand why they've not been torn down. There's a lot of asbestos-led-based paint. We're working on getting a study done of that right now, and we would have to abate that before they could be torn down. But I've been, I, I've had some meetings with neighbors, and everybody is very excited to see these houses torn down. So we are looking to develop about 58, invest about $58 million in St. Louis County. When we, we are an Indianapolis firm, but when we come in, we will only bring our construction supervisor. Everything else will be subbed out in St. Louis as well as the permanent management staff. This will be staffed every day. We will have two managers and two maintenance people that will be on-site all the time. People will be required to pay their utilities, but we also utilize a system called ION that's meant to provide up-to-date water usage. So if there's any leaks, anything like that, we can help people keep their utilities to a minimum. On top of which, we will also be building to NGBS bronze standard to make sure that it's very green. And this is just some of our similar properties in other states. We've got, the one on the top is in Indianapolis. The one in the corner is in Austin, Texas, and I believe another one's in Houston. So this is the, the product that we try to always bring in to a city when, or a county when we come. And so I really appreciate your time and your consideration for this. So are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the parking, it said $100.
That's only if you want to rent a garage. We make sure that there are free surface parking areas that meet the, the requirements for the county, which are 288. But in addition to that, we offer garages for rent. Some people like to use them for storage, some people like to park. Yeah, it's the Midwest, so you can't tell from day to day.
But parking, say, me and my wife both have cars, it'd be $100 per person?
No, no, that's only if you wanted to rent two garages. If you want to just park in the parking lot, there's no cost at all.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm getting at is a garage, each garage spot is $100.
Yes. But those are just an additional amenity. They're not required to do it, and there's plenty of, of free parking available. It just isn't covered.
Do you mind going back to the prices?
Sure. So the rents on these start at about $989 a month, going up to, on a four-bedroom, about $1,400 a month, $1,462. The garages are an additional amenity if you want those. We do encourage pet ownership, and so there is a small fee each month in addition to a pet deposit.
It's a low-income housing tax credit?
It's a, it's a tax credit, yes, but it's a bond deal, a 4% bond deal, which makes it very different than probably what you're thinking of. In Missouri, we've had a very strong 9% program, which has been extremely important. But I think Missouri is finally catching on to the 4%, which, which really targets more workforce. You're going to see a little bit higher rents, you're going to see a few more...
Meaning the interest rate?
No, 4% is the tax credits. So you have 9% tax credits that provide 9% of your basis without getting into too much. So there's a lot more there to help you build and keep your rents lower. But there's also requirements that come with that, that you provide some very low-income units. This is not that program. This is a 4% bond program where it's just providing some more affordable than market rate. So these rents have at least a 15% advantage over the market. I think they go up to around 30%. Just a catty corner to us, there's an older rundown property, and it, it's kind of in bad shape, and their rents are around $900 a month. So a lot of times what you see when you have these properties come in is it kind of forces other landlords in the area whose rents are around the same because we're able to utilize those 4% credits and those bonds to kind of step up their game and fix up their property a little bit. In addition, by being a 4% bond deal, we have a lot of investors, a lot of lenders, and a state agency that is ensuring that we're, we're keeping our properly, our property properly maintained.
Thank you.
Question, going back to the, the plat there, there's a red square?
Yes.
What is that?
I don't have it on mine. So there is one tiny lot that is, the owner died intestate. They haven't paid their property taxes in two years, and so we're hoping to pick that up in August. We cannot, we, we checked, we're not allowed by the rules of the county to buy it yet. You know, throughout the year, you have to wait for the county tax sale in August. And then we will be probably, or we're hoping to pick that up for the back... And then we will be probably, or we're hoping to pick that up for the back taxes and add that to this. Yeah. But we do have a contingency, if that doesn't happen. I wish I had a pointer. That, the very top building, the end, we can move that. We can take that off and add that on to another building, and then just fence around it and leave it as green space.
Good evening. I'm a little familiar with the 4%, 9%.
Great.
That's mine. Right in my ear. That's my job, unfortunately. So is this 100% subsidized? Or there is, there are a few market-rate units?
Well, we're going to use the state tax credit round, so we probably won't have any if we, I'm still working on some.
Have you received an award?
No, that we will apply in August, probably late August, early September, and then we would find out in December.
And this, this development is dependent on receiving an award, I imagine?
Yes.
And is there any ownership interest that you have with the new development across the street in the parking lot with the MetroLink?
No, no. And, and those will actually work out well. The, the capture rate, so I know you know capture rate, but the capture rate in North County is 5%. That's extremely low. So, and as I say, we're going to be targeting different demographics, because it's a 9% deal. But there are plenty of people in North County. It's, it's kind of an area of resurgence, and there are definitely people that are needing some affordable housing. And I hate to use that word, but, because I think people think of like the old head, the whole head stuff. This is not that. But, yeah, so there's a very, very low capture rate, and it will be done long before we probably even close. It's a smaller development in that parking lot. They would definitely be rented up before we are anywhere close to the end of construction.
And I know this isn't necessarily your lane, but that area of North Hanley that can, that turns into University Place, the road, the road needs some love.
Yes.
It's in, it's in dire, dire straits. I think the images that we had earlier.
I'll go back to.
Kind of shows that, is that St. Louis County or?
University Place itself, University Place Drive. I'd have to double that.
Right at the turn, really, but whatever. I hope that that road gets some love, since you've got this new development coming. If it's approved.
And that's something.
And you work that with, you work with St. Louis County, whoever.
Yes, we'll be working with them if they want some improvements made, definitely.
And I guess, last thing, all of those houses are vacant. Everything's vacant except for that little red circle which.
No, there's, there are two houses that are currently occupied, but we also, they're part of this. I think that's why we have two different numbers, because they have contracts on those as well that are also.
To buy, to buy them out and?
Yes, yes. So we've tried to plan with contingencies as much as possible.
And this could, it could be, it's, they're under contract. You said both of those lots, okay.
Yes, sir.
So you don't foresee one of those situations where you have a?
No, the only one that would be up in the air is the one that they died intestate, and we do have a plan for that. And that's, that's vacant. It's a vacant lot, so it would be easy to build around. Yes, sir.
How many developments do you have in the St. Louis area?
We don't have any in the St. Louis area. We have two in the Kansas City area. So I was hired by Kittle Property Group to kind of bring Missouri into our portfolio. We just did a very similar development. We closed on it. We're under construction in Kansas City, down in the Bannister area. And then we have a senior development up in Liberty. And we've worked very well with the city there, on both cities, actually.
Oh, one quick question. Have you worked at all with Missouri Workforce Housing?
Yes, yes. That's kind of our focus now. This is all we do.
Well, the association, I mean, Missouri Workforce.
Oh, MOA, yes, yes, definitely.
You're familiar with that?
Yes. We're definitely members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor for a group? Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Is there any individuals in favor?
Yes.
Please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Chris Keaster. I'm with TWM Engineering. We're the civil engineer on the site. Just wanted to provide a little bit of additional information of what Brenda discussed. There will be two site access points. So to the question about Hanley Road, there will be, there will be access on the western side of the site, between Buildings A1 and the Clubhouse CH. There will be northern access as well, and that will line up with West Loop Drive with the North Hanley MetroLink Station. Brenda also kind of mentioned the, the bold shape of this site. So there will be a stormwater retention pond that will comply with all MSD requirements as we progress through the site design. With the grades throughout the site, many of the buildings will likely have staggered foundations, and with that, we will be able to provide ADA compliance throughout the site, along sidewalks, parking areas, and to the adjacent sidewalks on Hanley Road and University Place. And if there are any other questions about the site design, I'd be happy to answer that.
That large body of water, that's a man-made, like, lake or something?
Yes. So with, with the topography of the site, it's understood that there will need to be some larger amounts of fill to build up the building pads. That blue area will be a stormwater retention area, though. So it'll be dug out, and then that will provide the, the stormwater.
But it won't hold water. It will just retain it during the event and then meter it out?
As of now, the plan would be that that, that it would have a normal pool. So it would be a lake.
Okay.
It would be like a lake-type of structure?
As of now, yes, that's the plan. And then on top of that normal pool, there would be the, the stormwater detention that happens, so that the release rates are lower than what's currently existing.
Are you, like, stocking it with fish and stuff? Or is that, is it a lake?
I will, I will say I have done developments that have the big pond like that before. We've never stocked them, but somehow fish always end up there. I don't know if it's birds or what, but they're always, they always end up with fish, yeah. So I wouldn't be surprised.
Someone's stocking it.
Thank you.
Any individuals like to speak in opposition or concern? Please come on up.
Okay, I'll just take your name down.
My name is Cheryl Milton-Roberts, and I'm a resident of the area and have lived in the area for 40-plus years. And I'm not speaking against or for, okay, so, but I just have questions. And I guess my first question is really because I'm concerned about my area. And one of the things that I find that happens in our area is that many things are decided and very few conversations are had. I am a 26-year-plus resident of Belraye Bakers, which backs up to that. There is a bird sanctuary that surrounds Belraye Bakers. And so my first question is, has anybody talked to Belraye Bakers? And has Belraye Bakers said, hey, this is great, and we've made sure that the stream and the animals and so forth that reside there are going to be okay? Thing one.
Do you have any more questions?
I do.
Okay, well, let's go through all your questions first.
So that's the first thing. The second thing is that that is a very close-knit community, if you will. So there's lots of little municipalities that are there. I have moved from Belraye Bakers, moved about two years ago, and now live in Belnor. And so the residents in Belnor, who I am here, kind of sort of speaking for, because we were talking about it on Nextdoor, first were kind of blindsided that this was happening. I kind of knew about it, because I used to live in Belraye Bakers. But again, there's got to be communication between all of those municipalities, and not just to the mayors, but to everybody, so that you can have people support what it is that you're doing, okay? The third thing is, I'm kind of concerned, because as I drive around St. Louis on Olive, where, you know, West County, I'm seeing all these apartments that are being built, and they're beautiful, okay? And so it's really exciting to think that somebody's going to build something in our area. But given that I sold my house for $400,000, okay, I find it very interesting that the only kinds of apartments that we can do are affordable housing that costs $985, when that's not what they're charging on Olive, okay? That's not right. It is not right to keep coming into our neighborhood and devaluing our neighborhood in that way. If you have no market-rate apartments, then pretty much you're getting a transient community, and you're not producing anybody that's going to be able to buy a resident, a residence in Belraye Bakers, Pasadena Hills, Pasadena Park, Belnor, Greendale, and the list goes on. And so I am all for developing that area, because it has been left adrift. And if they develop the area, then somebody needs to also identify who's responsible for those wonderful, great streets, flower beds that they put in on Hanley Road, that nobody takes care of, that have weeds this tall, and people walking across the reeds, weeds, because they didn't make a curb cut and getting hit, almost getting hit on a daily basis. But it is really embarrassing to me that every time we have a development in that area, we're looking at affordable housing exclusively and not looking at the same kinds of things that you're looking at when you are in Chesterfield or what have you, because we have $500,000 homes. We have doctors, lawyers, and so forth that live in Belraye Bakers, Pasadena Hills, Belnor, et cetera, okay? And so I find it a bit insulting. And I also find it a very bit insulting also that the number-one thing that you want to talk about is the security and the affordability. And we haven't talked about how we're going to, you know, really be enhancing the neighborhood with the kinds of people that actually already live there. And I also would like to understand the impact of these farms, which is across the street.
Thank you.
Do you want to take all, have all speakers?
Are there any other speakers in opposition? Okay. Thanks. Would you state your name and?
Dave Teas from Teas Farm and Greenhouses, and thank you very much. We have not had any notification whatsoever. Had to walk across the street to pull the pamphlet that we were having this hearing tonight. So, yeah, very poor communication, yeah.
We found out about it on Nextdoor. That's how we found out about it, because somebody saw it and put it there. And basically, what I would also say.
Sorry, could you come back up on the microphone?
What I would also say, and you've been a wonderful neighbor. I come, I go there all the time. This is, he has a wonderful establishment where he hires all kinds of people, and they have vegetable gardens and so forth. He's been a very stabilizing.
Where is this located?
These farms at Hanley Road and, and Highway 70, okay? And he's been there forever, and he's been a wonderful.
We've been there since 1885.
Yes, okay, so I want to understand what you're doing.
South of the BP gas station that's right off the highway.
Yeah, yeah, like right next door, like right past the apartment complex.
Right next to the apartment complex.
Right, that nobody has maintained, by the way, that nobody's looked at.
So are you in between the apartment complex and that gas station? Are you on the?
The other side. Ten acres on the other side. A working farm and greenhouses.
Right.
I grew up right there, and I had no idea.
Oh, my gosh, you missed that a whole lot. But the other part of this, and forgive me, I happen to be a woman of color. Okay, where are our voices in this? This is our community. That community is probably, I don't know, 75% people of color? You do not talk to a single one of people that I know. You've not been to Greendale, you've not been to Belnor, you've not been to Belraye Bakers, you've not been to Normandy, you've not been on, at Carsonville, you haven't been to Teas Farms. I'm glad Umsul's happy, okay, and I love Umsul, okay? But that's not right. And if that's how we start, that's how we finish. And we end up with an apartment that looks just like the one across the street, which is where we have drug dealers and so forth, and nobody takes care of it, and everybody just pretends like it's not there. And that's not right. I have nothing against building an apartment complex, but we need to back up, we need to have some conversation, and everybody needs to understand what it is that's going on, okay? And if you can't communicate now, you're not going to communicate later. And if you tell me, well, we may have a playground, and we may have a clubhouse, and we may have a, and that's not necessarily a guarantee. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's been your two minutes. And you have anything else there, sir?
My concern is, we've been through this, and, and we sold the property to the apartment complex to the end, at the end of our farm, back in the early '70s. Worst decision my grandfather ever made in his life. They started out being a very nice apartment complex for, at that time, you know, a high dollar. They are now Section 8, and if you talk to any St. Louis County cop, police officer, they will tell you that they spend 80% of their time at that apartment complex. We have, I mean, we're struggling to stay in the community right now because of that complex, because of the vacant houses that have sat there for 15 years. St. Louis County has done nothing about it. After numerous calls, nothing. So thank you for tearing down the houses, cleaning it up. But as you said, we'd like to know what's going on, and we do not want to see a repeat of what happened to the other apartment complex.
Now, can you answer the question about communications?
Sure. Sure, so what the zoning ordinance requires is that we put the sign on the, on the site that I think you were speaking of, that has the little real estate box. We do also send the public hearing notice to the St. Louis County newspaper. We're required to post it, post it in a newspaper that circulates, I think, every month. And then we do send postcards to all properties within 1,000 feet.
I did get the postcard today.
Okay, yeah, that's our notification process.
Kind of late.
You got it today.
Got it today, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, like she said, I think there needs to be some communication with the developer at this point. Yeah, so, I mean, like she said, I don't think anybody's against this. And we are, you know, thanking the Lord that these houses are cleaned up and torn down to get rid of the drug dealers and the shootings and the, you know, constant, you know, the police officers, I mean, I know them all by name, because we have them pull in daily. And, you know, an incident happens, you know, the bus, they, the stop is in front of our market. It's, it's just, it's a terrible situation right now. So we, we would love to see something happen, but my fear is that it will turn into a Section 8-type situation, and our property values will go down even more than they have the last 10 years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
There's one more, two more? Please come on up.
Hi, I don't have a card. My name is Lynn Williams. I live in University City. I'm speaking for my brother, whose house you actually showed on the.
In the site photos?
Yeah. He lives right on Link, which is right across the street from where this is going to be built. And we have a question about this little, I think it's G1, right at the bottom there, when you come around Hanley onto Link. What is that right there?
It's a garage.
That's a garage. And then there's the parking lot, okay? If you look at where it, it comes out right there onto Link, these are all abandoned houses along here, along Link on that side of the road. Why weren't those torn down, or do they plan to tear all that down?
Well, what, what you're looking at, there's no connection to Link right there. It wouldn't connect. I think what, at least on the rendering there, there's sort of a cluster of trees, but there's no road connection there.
Well, Link is right there.
Right, but there's no access point where people would, no one would be able to turn onto Link and then turn.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying that when, when you have that little part that comes out right there, that entire side from there all the way down are abandoned houses.
That are, that are grayed out?
All that that's grayed out is abandoned houses, except, right. They showed it on the, they showed the houses.
That, if I'm understanding you right, that's not property that they own or that they have. they have a contract to buy?
No, it's not a part of this. But there, it looks like there's a wall they're going to put right there so that those abandoned houses can't be seen, but they're all still there.
So the, the petitioner can speak to that, but they can only propose improvements on properties that they own or have a contract to purchase. So all the homes that are grayed out, they don't own, they aren't going to touch. But they do show a retaining wall there that's, and they can, they can explain it better that is for the nature of holding the land up.
So when he looks out his front door, he's going to see a garage and a retaining wall.
I, I would let the petitioner address that when they come back up.
Was your question, was your question why they didn't buy those other houses?
Right. That whole strip on that side.
Okay.
Yeah. That's...
And if they're going to have a wall right there...
Could I get your name, sir?
Myron Hamilton.
Okay.
They're going to have a wall.
You have your card?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Saying if they're going to have a wall, where I'm looking right out of my living room at a wall and a vacant house right here, that's not going to be touched. And I was wondering why would they not buy out the only two houses across the street, which is mine and the one next door? It's only two.
Oh, you, you live in one of those houses?
Right.
He lives in the house that was...
It shows, it shows.
It was the nice house that was fixed up and, yeah, and developed. So it's on the other side of Link.
I see.
Right across the street from...
Right across the street. Right. From the where the wall in the garage will be, he'll look out his living room window and that's what he will see. And that right there, that, we were just wondering why they didn't buy out that entire block or why someone doesn't at least tear the buildings down, tear all the houses down. Another thing, are these subsidized houses? Are this, is it subsidized housing?
Mm-hmm.
It is subsidized housing.
I, I think, she'll answer that question.
Okay. Then, this has nothing to do with Umsel dorms or anything like that?
She'll answer that question as well.
Okay. And I only have one other thing. The entrance that you have right there on Hanley, coming out onto Hanley, there is a curve right there. And when I'm leaving his house, it's really dangerous. When you're coming out of Link right there, there's a curve that comes like this around. These farm is on this side. And when you come around that curve, you can't see anything. And so for cars to be coming in and out there, that's really a dangerous spot right there for an entrance. So, I mean, I don't know if they want to move it down further or, you know, put it somewhere else. If it's going to go there, then it needs to be looked at because cars speed down Hanley right there and you have to sit there and pull out and, you know, trying to surround the cars. It's very dangerous. So, that's all I have.
Right. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Are there any other questions, concerns, opposition? Rebuttal, please.
Well, first, I'd like to clear up about communication. I've done everything I can to try to communicate with as many people as possible. I spoke last week with 24and1, with all the mayors and aldermen of the area, hoping that they would spread the word. I gave them all my contact information if anybody wanted to reach out. They were certainly welcome to. I asked Councilwoman Daze to put it in her newsletter and of course, the postcards went out. I'm sorry if some didn't get there. I did get some phone calls from other people that received their postcards last week. So I've communicated, it's actually harder now to communicate with people than it used to be in the days when you could put an ad and everybody read the newspaper. But I've communicated as much as I possibly could to make sure that everybody was aware of, and in specifically, Belvier, the mayor, and I actually had a really nice talk after that, that neighborhood, the community meeting last week. And, and he indicated that he'd be reaching out to me to, to maybe set a, a one-on-one meeting to discuss in more detail. As far as the birds, yes, that's protected area. There's nothing that we would do to touch that, even if it was on our property. We couldn't, as I'm sure most of you know, if there's protected wetlands, animal sanctuaries, we, we won't touch anything like that. That would be against the law. As far as too many affordable apartments, you know, this is our business. I can't speak for other developers. And I think that maybe that one across the street that was built as a market rate is probably a great example of what happens when you don't have oversight. That's the advantage of, of having some oversight. These are not subsidized in the, in the way that people think of old hood housing, even the 9%. This is specifically meant to bring more of the working class families into the area. The rents for these are geared towards people like a family of four making about $60,000 a year. So this is not meant to be a low income property by any means. Like, as I said earlier, people will have to pass a credit check, a criminal background check, and that credit check will encompass checking their income to make sure that they can pay not only the rent but the utilities and that they have sufficient income to do that. And the goal of, of any affordable, particularly the 4% bond, the ultimate goal is that we have people currently in this country that are paying 40 and 50% of their income for rent. That does not leave money to spend on their kids. It does not leave money to spend on their utilities. It does not leave much money for anything. And the only way that they're going to be able to save up and become homeowners and buy the $400,000 houses is they have a somewhat affordable place to live. This is not something, we don't have any project-based Section 8 vouchers. You know, this is not a based on your income, this is what your rent will be. These rents I'm showing here, these are what their rents are and they have to show a way to pay it. As far as Umsel, no. There's no, no connection with the dorms. That doesn't mean that people who go to Umsel can't apply to live there. They would be able to apply just like anybody else. And then as far as the wall, I'm actually going to ask my civil to come up. That's a retaining wall and that has to do, it's not about, you know, hiding any houses from anybody. It's about the dirt not falling down in people's yards. Hopefully at some point, somebody will buy those lots. They were not for sale to us. And so we won't be building on them. That's all I can, you know, I don't know how else to answer that. What we can do is we can try to improve the neighborhood as much as possible. And as you've seen from pictures of our other developments, we have an amazing reputation and we keep our developments in our portfolio. Forty years from now, this will still be owned by Kittle Property Group. And so we have skin in the game. This is going to be our asset and so we have every incentive to make sure that it's taken care of properly. We do not sell our developments after they get built and stabilized like a lot of developers do. And so I understand people's concern, but that's not what we do. I think that answered all of the questions. So, does anybody else have any?
Public funding, there's utility allowance, right?
Yes, there's a utility allowance, but these rents are after the utility allowance.
After the utility allowance. Talk about the gate of, if this is going to be a gated property. You said you're having those conversations with...
I have. So we originally conceived it as a gated property just because, you know, most people like the idea of living in a, in a gated community. When we talked to staff, they said, oh, let's kind of see where, you know, let's see, let's talk about that some more as we move forward. Last week, when I was at the, the community meeting, actually it was the mayor of Belgrade who said that, yes, you should absolutely have that as a gated community. So, you know, we, we are definitely going to be taking people's, you know, as you can see on here, this, I passed this out to everybody at the community last week. We want people to contact us. You have my name, my analyst's name, and both our vice presidents of development, our names, phone numbers, and emails. We want to hear suggestions. We want to know what is needed in the community. And we can kind of adjust our property to meet the needs of the community. That's our goal. We're, we want to become a part of the community. We're not going to just bring our people in, build something and walk away. We're looking to become a part of the community. That's why we hire local, that's why we sublocal. And as I said, we, this is going to be ours 40 years from now, so we want to make sure that it's taken care of.
Did you go back to the rent for a three bed group was how much?
$13.53.
And that, you had said a family of four? Making $60,000? Okay.
So this is, this is not meant to, this is not meant as a statement about, about anybody that lives there. It's meant to be an improvement to the community and I think that it definitely will be. I'm very excited about having the farm across the street. I think that our, the people that live here, our residents, would be very happy to shop in that, in, in that business. You're talking about families, working families, that maybe work over at one of the many businesses that are over in the industrial parks. So I think that's going to be a big boon for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, can we have a show of hands of those that are in favor of this petition?
I see five.
And those in opposition are concerned? Those in opposition are concerned? Two. All righty. This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Remember, executive session.
Yes.
Abby, would you get us for five minutes? Thank you.
Folks, it's, it's time for our executive session.
Are we unmuted again? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Oh, Evelyn, over here. Yeah. I know I... I thought, did she raise her hand for one of those? Oh, this isn't the right one. Do you want to gavel back in?
Yeah, yeah. Come to order the executive session here. Like, make another roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Hey, we have a call.
Oh, I don't have, are you clicking, Abby?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we have two letters for the commission's approval tonight. If you want to do them together or separate? Okay. Uh, we have PC 1524, Joyce Ann Moore, and PC 1624, University Crossing. Both of these are recommendations of approval consistent with the commission's actions on June 3rd.
Make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second made. All those in favor? Okay. Do we have any discussion here? None? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. We have a count of seven?
Yes.
Zero. You, next. Correspondents?
Just quickly, Dorian, have you met? Have you, you've not been before the planning commission before?
Believe it or not, this is my first.
This is Dorian Anderson, one of our interns this summer. He's actually, I don't know, senior intern? I don't know, because he started two weeks ago and the other two started today. So, as many of the commissioners are, are familiar, we like to have the interns present before the planning commission. So, Dorian has written this correspondence item himself. I mean, do you, do you want to say anything about yourself to the commission?
I'm glad to be here. Yeah, I'm a local to South St. Louis County, unincorporated. So, yeah, right up near Ronnie's. I've been here all my life and I'm studying at the University of Illinois, Branagh-Champaign. And, yeah, I'm glad to be here. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Well, to get started here, we are going to be looking at, good evening commissioners, first off. This is PC 4783, U-Haul Company of Eastern Missouri. Currently zoned as a C8 planned commercial district with a request for amendments to ordinance 11124. The current petitioner is proposing an increase in the permitted gross floor area. This is a 5.7 acre tract on the east side of Lusha Road to the south of Parker Road in North St. Louis County. So as you can see here with the contacts map, there it is on the left in that red dot, Northern St. Louis County. And to the right, you can see the property outlined in red. Again, here is a second aerial of the site showing more of the immediate surroundings. So, for context, PC 47-83 was originally a request for a change of zoning from C4 to C8. This request was to use the site as a temporary storage and warehousing of customer goods and truck and equipment leasing. County council adopted this governing ordinance, uh, eleven-one-two-four on August eleventh, nineteen eighty-three. The ordinance has since been amended several times, including changes to the hours of operation and building size. Most recently of these was in two thousand thirteen, when a request was positioned to allow for the parking and display of U-Haul trucks and trailers for lease in the western portion of the site fronting Lusher Road. This current request is to allow an increase in the total floor area. So, uh, as seen here, the preliminary site plan is for new storage structures on the, uh, eastern third of the site in five rows. These are modular mini warehouses which can be individually moved into place. In addition to this, the petitioner has proposed several changes to the display parking along the western edge of the site, creating six dedicated truck display spaces and alter, uh, alterations to the curbs. Here is a preliminary landscaping plan provided by the petitioner. This would be for the frontage along Lusher Road, changing the curbs and, uh, including three trees, ninety-four shrubs. Currently, the department recommends approval of the request to allow for increased permitted gross floor area. This is from approximately forty-six thousand to seventy thousand square feet. Uh, the proposed additions are appropriate for the site. We also, uh, asked that the, uh, there is a request for increased permitting, or sorry, um, we would like it to include, um, architectural elevation schematics showing the facades of all of these modular structures that they will be adding. And lastly, we would like to see the, uh, amending of the C-eight ordinance to include additional provisions for landscaping. This is an opportunity to bring the parcel further into conformity with the existing zoning ordinance and improve the visual appearances of the property. At this point, I would like to request a motion.
How did the hours change, or do they, the hours of operation?
Oh, that is from an older ordinance. I did not see what they were changed to or from.
There are no cha, proposed changes to the hours.
Yeah, tho, those are staying as is. That's just, um, from a, a previous ordinance many years ago.
I have, I have a question, so would the required architectural elevation be of all the structures or just the new ones?
It would be of just the new modular structures that they're building on the, uh, eastern portion of the site.
These structures are going to be temporary, uh, to house what?
It would be to house, um, additional goods, um, uh, by the U-Haul, uh, organization. So this is for the customer goods, um, trucking equipment, things like that.
Yeah, basically, in the main structure, from what I understand, it's like a regular self-storage facility where you go in and you take your goods and put them in an indoor locker, but then these are outdoor mini warehouses. It's similar, I think they put these on the site on, um, West Florissant, the old venture store. Uh, they have the mini warehouses out in the parking lot, so they are movable, but I don't think they plan to move them. They would, you know, it's not like, um, they're not like pods. It's not like someone would, oh, take it to their house, fill it up, and then bring it here. I believe it would just be they were, are coming with their items to, to store them. Right, they're, they're for rent individually.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion for approval? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, uh, do we have any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it seven-zero. Dorian's a natural. You see?
Next, we have, uh, PC one-eleven eighty-five Mills property, which is a C-eight planned commercial district. It's a ten-acre tract on the northeast side of Lindbergh Boulevard and southeast of LeMay Ferry Road. Uh, they are requesting the removal of the setback requirement for their curb cut from Adworth Drive to allow a, a new curb cut onto Adworth Drive. This site is in South County, and you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. Here, you can see the larger aerial, the surrounding development. It's, uh, next to the Home Depot in South County. For context, PC one-eleven eighty-five was a request for a change of zoning from R-seven and C-eight to C-eight and amended C-eight planned commercial district to develop a retail shopping center and, uh, theater. The original site development plan did show three curb cuts from Adworth Drive, but it was later reduced to two, um, based on commission concerns and the ability to work through cross-access agreement with the, um, existing commercial development, um, to the west. Um, the ordinance has been amended, uh, several times to expand the permitted uses to include outdoor recreation, office uses, te, uh, telecommunications tower, educational, religious, and community services, and childcare. It was most recently, um, amended in two thousand twenty-two to allow all permitted C-two shopping district uses. And the current request is to remove the setback requirements for the curb cuts from Adworth Drive to allow for a new curb cut.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what that means.
So currently, there's a, the C-eight ordinance requires that, um, any curb cut onto Adworth, onto the site, be three hundred and eighty feet from the northeast property line, and they're asking for that to be struck from the ordinance so that they could put in a curb cut on any part of, of Adworth.
Normally, when we get sort of prohibitive restrictions like that, which are typically written by county transportation, it'll usually say something like, no more than three curb cuts shall be permitted on Adworth. But because of the way Adworth jogs, it's not as straightforward to just say how many you get. They put this setback requirement on it so that the curb cuts could only be located in a specific, basically, it would preclude them from being located exactly where they're proposing it. So normally, we don't see, like, setbacks for curb cuts. We just see.
No subject to, I would ask approval.
Uh, Adworth in this area is a county rose.
Or, it's sub, subject to some governmental authority.
Correct, you, correct. In, in, there's two things stopping them right now, needing approval from CODOT at all, uh, getting a special use permit, but also because the ordinance specifically prohibits that. They can't even go and ask for a special use permit from county transportation because the ordinance prohibits it.
So they submitted this preliminary site development plan, which shows the new curb cut. It's circled in red there. Um, like we mentioned, the ordinance currently says that, um, no curb cut can be located within three hundred and eighty feet of the northeast property line, so that pushes, um, it's pushed the curb cuts onto Adworth closer to the Barracks View entrance and closer to Lindbergh Boulevard. Um, they're requesting this curb cut, um, to allow, there's a Missouri state office in this development, um, and they would like, uh, this access to allow their employees to access the rear parking easier. Um, the petitioner stated that it's desirable in this location so that employees don't need to drive through the Home Depot staging and, uh, seasonal merchandise area. Here's a, here's a closer view of the proposal. And you can see that Adworth Drive kind of jogs there. The department is recommending denial of this request. Adworth Drive is developed with multifamily apartments and condominiums, and there is a pedestrian crossing at this corner. Um, we find it's inappropriate to allow additional commercial traffic onto a residential street, and we find, um, it is, uh, critical to orient commercial access toward Lindbergh and Barracks View Road. Um, furthermore, the Department of Transportation and Public Works has stated that they wouldn't support the curb cut in this location. Um, so at this time, I'd like to request a motion, oh, sorry.
One thing I would just note, um, that Abby said in the background is that when this petition originally came before the planning, a different planning commission in nineteen eighty-five, they proposed a curb cut at this location, but these similar concerns have existed the whole time. So at that time, they, instead of having this access, they were asked to and did get a cross-access easement across the Home Depot site for the exact purpose of them traversing that way to get to the back instead of creating this conflict here, um, which is basically what you said, but I just wanted to make sure that we connected those dots.
Make a motion for denial? Second?
Second?
Any more questions? Hey, all those in, uh, favor of this denial? Signify. Have I seen aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it seven-zero. Now, we have our site plans.
The first site plan is for PC twelve dash ten St. Anthony's Hospital. Um, this is a C-eight planned commercial district. Last week, we saw the cancer center addition. Tonight, we're seeing the emergency department addition. Um, this is Mercy South, they have a, a number of minor additions. Um, so this is in South County, and you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. And all that's before you tonight is the architectural elevations. Um, it's proposed to match the existing structure. So we're recommending approval.
Questions?
Yeah, so it's, um, I'm sorry, is, this is an addition?
Yes.
They're expanding the emergen-
Emergency department building.
And they've submitted these plans to show that they're going to match what's existing.
That's correct.
Do I have a motion?
I'd move to make a motion.
Second?
Second?
Favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it seven-zero. Next site plan, please.
Do you want to do it? Good evening, PC twenty-three dash twenty-three All Rig USA is, was a request for an amended C-eight to allow two fast-food restaurants with drive-through facilities on two-point-five-nine acres located in the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road, Town South Road, and northwest of Old Tesson Road. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County and is in the aerial on the right outlined in red. This is actually across from the Mercy South Hospital. And as this commission may recall, this site was proposed for, um, one building to be a Chick-fil-A and the other to be a Chipotle with drive, both with drive-through services. Um, they intend to have an underground water detention. Um, so, everything is meeting, they only have two curb cuts along Old Tesson. They are not doing any other curb cuts, they are continuing to have one monument sign. We do have landscaping along all roads. They do, they did at their public hearing and the further executive meetings, propose, um, a landscape wall along Old Tesson to help shield some of the lights from, uh, cars onto the residential properties across the street. That is still consistent with what the planning commission saw at the executive and public hearings. So these are the renderings for the Chick-fil-A, just your very standard Chick-fil-A colors. Um, same for their trash enclosure, it is, um, a two trash enclosure with a storage building for the outside for non-perishable items, very similar to what they have at several Chick-fil-A sites. This is the Chipotle building. Um, originally at your public hearing and executive hearings, the, um, employee building was along the back facing Tesson Ferry. After some discussion with them during site plan review, that door has been moved to the side, um, inward to the site, and then they have added additional landscaping to that back area to shield, um, the access ladder to the roof and the equipment back there. All equipment on top, if there's any on top, the Chick-fil-A does have equipment on top of their building. It is being screened by rooftop, uh, screens. This is the, the lower part is the trash can for the Chipotle, matching the colors and materials as noted on the building for Chipotle. This is what their monument sign will be, they will share one monument sign, so there will only be one monument sign, and that will be along Tesson Ferry. This is the landscape wall that they did show at, um, the executive meetings for this commission. Again, it stayed consistent with what they showed to you guys back then. And there it is again. They also have a small landscape wall along the back near Tesson Ferry. It will be the same material and same color. And there's, that would be the proposed Chipotle building. This is some of the landscaping that they're kind of showing how they're going to help screen, but there's additional landscaping that's not shown in here. But there's that landscape wall that they will have. Staff is recommending approval, they have followed everything and has met the requirements of the site plan.
For the recommendation of the staff, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it seven-zero. To the order.
So, uh, at last week's meeting, I think we briefly began talking about, we talked about a couple of, um, committees. We are going to, in addition to notifying you about the July first executive meeting, um, we will send you information about the nominating committee meeting as well as an ad hoc bylaws committee. Um, third, we will probably schedule at the same time, or, you know, on the same night, uh, the comprehensive planning committee, basically to have a smaller group to tackle some of the comp plan, um, considerations. To update you a little bit on that, we are sort of closing up our initial public engagement phase where we're asking people what they think about the status quo, and then we're now moving into our sort of scenario play, excuse me, scenario planning and sort of our ideas testing phase. Um, so there will be plenty of opportunities for the commission to be involved in that, um, as an entire body, but also on that committee. So we will be sending you additional information about those meetings.
Members of the commission, I do have.
To be on the nominating committee, great, okay. Um, I'll probably, yeah, 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 that sounds good, or I'll call you.
Very good.
Um. Okay, great, and then I know Paula was, yeah, exactly, okay, that sounds great. So, I think that's all I have, though, the next meeting will be July first. Seems like a, kind of a long break, but I think that's just the nature of how our meetings have sort of been.
It's only two weeks.
It's only two weeks?
Yeah.
Well.
Good question?
Well, I, no, it's three weeks, sorry, there's two Mondays, there's two Mondays off.
Okay.
It's three weeks.
What kind of response have you been getting?
Oh, um, well, we have been to so many, like, community events, you know, all these farmers markets. We were at the airshow this week. We really hear a wide, wide range. We talk to a lot of people who have no idea what we're talking about, so it's sort of a, kind of a planning one-on-one, kind of, here's how the built environment impacts your life, if you didn't know. Um, all the way to people who are like, oh, yeah, I've participated in stuff like this, like, how can I be involved? Um, so really, the whole, whole wide range, um, for the general public. But then we've also done a lot of sort of, uh, more targeted stakeholder outreach and interviews with, um, community groups. We've talked to people from Greater St. Louis Inc. Uh, we've talked to so many people, but I, I, I would say that, I mean, I don't know if anyone would disagree. I think we're getting pretty positive, um, responses. We have, um, on the project website, which we can definitely share the link again, we have an interactive mapping tool where people can drop a pin and, and give us basically any sort of, uh, location-based feedback that's really filling up, it's really interesting to look at. Um, a lot of it's like, this road is in terrible condition, but some are, are pretty thoughtful, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? Hey, I'd like to move for adjournment, do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You adjourned. Is it live first? Six P.M., are we going to be live?
Uh, I believe.
Should we be live for that?
We may need to be in person, that may be more productive.
Very good.
But we'll, we'll confirm through an email. Or let me know.
Good night.
Goodnight, Arabeta, see you, Lou.
Good night.